Let's call the meeting to order, or I will call the meeting to order. Chris Tamer, you want to call the role, please?
Sure. Mulliner? Brennan?
Here.
Verimus? Deuter?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
I'm sorry, no, I meant Johnson, excuse me. Johnson?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Conquest? Absent. Bastido?
Here.
Twelve present, one absent, one vacancy.
All right, very good. I want to announce the governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, and all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the June 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the city council participating in the June 14 Committee of the Whole Meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Who have you got on the line, alderman? Jensen, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I think he would be the only one. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move directly into the business portion of our program, which is to talk about fair housing. As I announced at the last meeting, Brian Connolly will be making a presentation about fair housing. And he, for the aldermen who have your laptops, you can pull up, I don't know if you received the slides or not, but they will be coming up on the screens, whether on your laptop or on the big screen facing the audience. As I may or may not have mentioned, I listened to a seminar that Brian Connolly had presented as a, to the International Municipal Lawyers Association, and I was impressed by it. And he's certainly an expert in the field. So without further ado, I'm going to let him do his own introduction. And we're going to have a presentation, which will be an overview of the Fair Housing Act and some specifics about the kinds of things that we're looking at here, after which we'll have time for the aldermen to pose questions. So, let's see, I see little Brian up there. Welcome, Brian. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me all right?
We can, and I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Let me know when you can see it.
We've got it.
Okay, very good. Well, good evening, Mayor and Aldermen. I appreciate the invitation to be here, and I'm getting some feedback. Are you hearing it?
No.
Is everyone muted on their laptops?
Everyone muted on your laptops?
Make sure he's muted on his laptop. No, Brian. Mr. Connolly?
Brian, are you muted on your laptop?
I am, yeah.
All right. Is it still, is the feedback persisting?
I'll proceed. Hopefully, it won't get too much of it.
All right.
So, good evening, Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate the invitation. I understand that you've got a bit of a challenging situation in front of you relating to fair housing. And so I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation this evening. And I look forward to, first and foremost, answering any of your questions after my, what I hope will be a fairly brief presentation. I realize that it might not be appropriate that I have this image of snow and houses on the first page of my presentation, but where I'm sitting in Denver, it's 100 degrees today, so I guess maybe we're hoping for a little bit of snow right now. So, I'll start out by giving you just a little bit of an overview of what I plan to cover in my presentation, and then I'll proceed into substance of it. So, I'll talk a little bit, just give you a little bit of background about myself and what brings me to this issue and how I got interested in it. I'll talk in kind of general terms about the Fair Housing Act and how it relates to local zoning, talk a little bit about kind of the substance of the act itself, and then more specifically about how municipalities can be held liable under the Fair Housing Act and the ADA. The protections are fairly similar. I'll talk a little bit about sober living homes and fair housing and some of the specific issues that come up in that realm, and then we can move into questions and answers. So, a little bit about me. I am both a land use planner and a lawyer. I started my career as a land use planner. I worked for county government in New York State. And I actually, one of the reasons I went to law school was because of a Fair Housing Act case that came to the county where I worked. We had to defend a Fair Housing Act claim, and I was, as a planner, fairly intimately involved in the defense of that claim. I just found that whole area of the law very interesting, and so that was one of the many reasons why I chose to move on and go to law school. In my current role, I've been at the same firm since I finished law school. In my current role, we represent both applicants and local governments on a whole variety of matters in and around the world of land use. And representing both landowners and local governments in fair housing-related matters has become an important part of my practice. So, and I should be clear that we do represent, at times, providers of services to people who are entitled to the protection of the Fair Housing Act, including people with disabilities. And, but we also represent local governments on those things as well. So, I've worked with a number of localities on drafting ordinances and the like that have fair housing sort of dimensions. I've represented municipalities that have received applications, that have fair housing questions around them, and have actually participated in several sessions, much like the one that we're having right now, where I'm providing a little bit of kind of an educational role and on the dynamics of federal fair housing law. And I've actually also helped out neighborhood groups that have been involved in matters relating to group homes and people with disabilities, in particular relating to sober homes. My last one of those was assisting a neighborhood organization in the Aspen, Colorado area where there was a sober living home in the neighborhood, and they had several questions sort of around what the limitations were that they could place on the operation of the sober living home. So, I've seen this issue from all sort of angles and different dimensions. In addition to my work here at the firm, I teach land use law at both the University of Denver and the University of Colorado law schools. And I'm very heavily involved, as the mayor indicated, in professional organizations for people who are involved in land use and local government matters, including the American Planning Association, the American Bar Association, and the International Municipal Lawyers Association. Some of my interest in this area is also informed by the fact that I served as a co-author of the ABA's leading publication on planning and zoning for group homes. That book was published six years ago. I collaborated with Dwight Miriam, who is also a planner and lawyer, works on the East Coast on that book, and since then have authored several Law Review and other articles on fair housing. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about my background or any of those publications, but for now, I'll move on to the substance of the presentation. What I did want to say before I start is, first of all, I am not a licensed Illinois lawyer. I'm licensed here in Colorado and in several federal courts, but I cannot provide legal advice on matters of Illinois law and certainly would look to your city attorney to do any portion of this that requires looking at state law. I'm also not really intending to provide specific legal advice on, I understand there's one pending application before the city of Elmhurst. I have reviewed the materials relating to that application. I understand the background of it. But my role here this evening is not to opine on the ultimate question of whether or not the city council should approve or deny that application. What I intend to do tonight is provide some guidance and offer some legal analysis on anti-discrimination laws, the Fair Housing Act and the ADA, and also offer an opportunity for discussion and question and answer on any items that you may have questions on. So, moving into the substance of the presentation, I think it's important to first understand the relationship between local zoning law and federal law. So, those of us who work in and around local zoning, and certainly all of you who hear and see zoning cases regularly, understand that zoning is part of the police power that we reserve to states as part of our federal constitution. And so, state law then informs and enables local zoning. So, in Illinois and in any other state in the country, you rely on grants of authority from the state government to allow you to engage in zoning. And what that means, that as a city council, you have broad authority to regulate everything from land uses to development standards, procedures for zoning and other land use applications. And that's a fairly broad authority. There are very few limitations on that, except for those that come from state law. And then generally speaking, from a constitutional perspective, when you're making a decision on, say, your sort of run-of-the-mill residential or commercial rezoning or a conditional use permit or a site plan perhaps, really the only limitation is that you need to have a rational basis for whatever you're doing. So, you need to have a legitimate governmental interest to take action that sort of rationally furthers that legitimate governmental interest. Where we get the overlay of federal law is in a few specific areas of zoning that I'll talk about shortly. So, we do have as part of our federal constitution what we call the supremacy clause, which says that federal law controls over any contrary or conflicting state or local law. Where we see the federal law, the Constitution, federal statutes involved in zoning are in areas such as the First Amendment, if you're regulating signs or you're regulating advertising. First Amendment issues come around. We see federal issues when we're dealing with process, due process concerns, whether you have held a proper hearing, things like that. We also see federal law come into play when we're talking about takings and the power of eminent domain. And then we also see federal law come into play when we're talking about congressionally enacted statutes. So, that could be the Religious Land Uses and Institutionalized Persons Act. There's the Telecommunications Act that requires you to make provision for telecommunications in the city. And then, of course, this evening, we're talking about the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, really, the Fair Housing Act and the ADA serve as almost kind of an overlay, might be the easiest way to think about it with local zoning, in that you have zoning, you have procedures you need to follow as part of your zoning, but all of those are sort of trumped by the Fair Housing Act or the ADA because those are federal laws. And generally speaking, as we'll see tonight, when federal law applies, local governments generally have less decision-making discretion than they would in the area, in an area of local zoning where federal law is not at issue. So, a little bit about the Fair Housing Act. What I'm going to talk about in my discussion of the Fair Housing Act, just talk briefly about who's protected, what types of housing are protected by the Fair Housing Act, who needs to comply with the Fair Housing Act, and then we'll talk a little bit about substantive prohibitions of it. There are seven protected classes under the Federal Fair Housing Act. Those include race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and handicap. Generally speaking, handicap is an older term. The more politically correct term now is disability. And the disability protections of the Fair Housing Act are really what we're going to be talking about this evening in relationship to sober living homes. State and local fair housing laws may add protected classes. I know for a fact that Illinois has added several protected classes under the Fair Housing Act, but again, because we're talking about disability, we can stick with the original seven protected class. So, I'll drill a little bit into the definition of what handicap is for purposes of the Fair Housing Act protection. So, first of all, the handicap protections protect people with disabilities as well as people associated with a disabled person. So, for example, they protect someone who, you know, is maybe recovering from addiction, maybe somebody who is wheelchair-bound, or someone who has a sight impairment or something like that, as well as people associated with that person. So, if you're a provider of services for someone who might be in recovery from addiction, or you're a provider of services for someone who's wheelchair-bound, you are also entitled to the protections of the Fair Housing Act. The definition of handicap is, under the Fair Housing Act, of physical or mental impairment, which substantially limits one or more of a person's major life activities. Major life activities, we'll drill down a little bit into that, but that sort of day-to-day living and relationships and things like that. It can also mean a record of having such an impairment. So, if someone in the past had a disability and is being discriminated against because of that past disability, that would also entitle them to the protections of the act. And being regarded as having such an impairment, that can also entitle you to protections of the act. So, if I think you have a disability and I discriminate against you, then I would be potentially in violation of the Fair Housing Act. You'll see that the definition does not include current illegal use of or addiction to a controlled substance. So, as we'll talk about a little bit more this evening, fair housing act protections extend to people who are in recovery from addiction. They do not extend to people who are current addicts of a controlled substance. And as you see on the bullet point, the disability protections also extend to people with HIV infection. I won't read the verbatim, but we have federal regulations that provide further clarification on what types of physical or mental impairments might qualify as handicapped or disabilities under the Fair Housing Act. I think we can make this presentation available after the meeting, so if anyone wants to review these in detail, you're welcome to do that. These are regulations that are developed and implemented by HUD, so that's where we get these lists from. Sorry, when I say HUD, I mean the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Here are just a little bit more definitional language. So, what are major life activities? You see that it includes caring for oneself, performing simple tasks, walking, seeing, hearing, speaking, learning and working. And then I've got a little bit more detail on what it means to have a record of impairment or to be regarded as having impairment. Some conditions that are not considered disabilities under the Fair Housing Act, and maybe this is just important to sort of provide maybe, maybe a little bit of clarity on what that means. There are cases, these are federal court cases, that have found that people who have emotional disturbances have distinguished from an actual clinical disability. They are not protected by the Fair Housing Act. People who have a history of abuse, people who are homeless are not protected by the Fair Housing Act. Homelessness alone does not make one protected. Certainly, there's a lot of overlap between disability and homelessness in some parts of our country. And so, maybe by virtue of having a disability, that person would be protected, but homelessness alone doesn't create protection under the Fair Housing Act. Past incarceration or criminal behavior, that is not one of the protected classes, so someone is not entitled to protections of the Fair Housing Act solely by virtue of having been in prison. Juvenile delinquency, similar, and again, current drug use is not a protected condition. You also just note that there are several missing classes from the Fair Housing Act. Income and economic class, so poor people are not protected by the Fair Housing Act. Source of income, if you receive Section 8 vouchers and use those to pay for your housing, you don't get Fair Housing Act protection solely by virtue of that. Orphanages and homeless people, again, not protected by the Fair Housing Act. And similarly, sexual orientation is not a class that's protected by the Fair Housing Act. The protection for housing is quite broad. So, we have a definition of dwelling in the Fair Housing Act, and dwelling means any building, structure, or portion which is occupied as or designed or intended for occupancy as a residence. So, really, because of the breadth of that definition, any housing unit, an apartment, a single-family house, a duplex, those would all be considered dwellings for purposes of the Fair Housing Act protection. Really, the only place where we see the Fair Housing Act not extending to cover certain types of dwellings is very temporary situations. Say, for example, a motel room or a hotel room, those are not considered dwellings. We do have federal case law that says that even where people live in a dwelling for a very short period of time, though, be it a house or a duplex or an apartment, if they live there for a very short period of time, they are still entitled to the protections of the Fair Housing Act. There was a case out of New London, Connecticut, that found that stays as short as, I believe it was 14 days, for people who were in recovery from a particular, I think it was a mental illness facility, that they were still entitled to the Fair Housing Act protection because that was the person's home for that period of time. They were exiting institutionalization. So, again, homeless shelters, hotels and motels, very transitional types of living facilities are the types that are not protected by the Fair Housing Act. So, turning to who needs to comply with the Fair Housing Act. Private landlords are required to comply, so we do see Fair Housing Act cases where landlords maybe refuse to rent to someone based on racial background or ethnic background, disability, things like that. Real estate agents are required to comply. Mortgage lenders are required to comply. And then, as is important for purposes of our discussion this evening, local governments are one of the parties that is covered by the Fair Housing Act and need to comply with this. Turning to the substantive prohibitions of the Fair Housing Act. The main one is the Fair Housing Act prohibits parties, local governments, from refusing to sell or rent after the making of a bona fide offer or refusing to negotiate for the sale or rental of or otherwise making unavailable or denying a dwelling. We've got a lot of Fair Housing Act cases from federal courts around the country that make clear that zoning or building regulations or actions taken by local governments can have the effect of making unavailable or denying a dwelling to a protected person. Similarly, local governments, where we see this come up in local government context, is in the provision of services. So, the Fair Housing Act also requires equal treatment in the provision of services or facilities. So, that could be in the area of providing water service to a particular home or a facility. It could also mean, you know, a condominium association allowing equal access to amenities, things like that. But typically, in the local government context, we see discrimination in the area of utility service, or we see this issue come up in the area of utility service. And so, that's another place where we see Fair Housing Act sort of intermingling with local government activities, zoning, development, the like. Similarly, there is a requirement that local governments make reasonable accommodations in rules, policies, practices, or services when they're necessary to afford a person with disabilities an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. This requirement applies to both private and public rules. So, it could mean homeowners' association covenants and regulations, condo association rules, but it also applies to zoning subdivision building regulations and things like that. And because I understand that there is a reasonable accommodation request in front of you, I will spend a fair amount of time talking about the reasonable accommodation provisions of the Fair Housing Act. I've spent most of this presentation talking about the Fair Housing Act and haven't spent a lot of time on the ADA. The ADA was enacted after the disability protections of the Fair Housing Act were enacted, and they're much broader, quite honestly, than the Fair Housing Act protections are. The ADA is why we have, for example, handicap parking stickers and handicap parking signs in our parking lots. It's why we design buildings to be accessible. So, the ADA applies to what we call places of public accommodation, not just housing, but stores, shopping malls, government buildings, libraries, things like that that any person with a disability might access. But the ADA also requires that local governments not engage in discrimination on the basis of disability. And we often see when there's litigation over housing discrimination in the area of disabilities, we see claims being filed under both the Fair Housing Act and the ADA because they have so much overlap in terms of their protection. So, I'm going to turn away from the sort of basics about the Fair Housing Act and talk about how local governments get into trouble under the Fair Housing Act. There are three ways that, under zoning or building codes, local governments can get into trouble. The first is what we call disparate treatment. The second is what we call disparate impact, and the third is what we call failure reasonably accommodated. And so, I'll walk through each of these briefly. Disparate treatment comes up in two contexts. First, it could be where a local code or a decision is very clearly discriminatory against a protected class. So, if we see, to take maybe an extreme example, if we saw a local government have a zoning regulation that said that anyone of African-American descent cannot live in the R1 zoning district, or anyone of Jewish descent cannot live in the R2 zoning district, that would be a very clearly discriminatory provision. That would be facially discriminatory. The law would, on its face, call out a particular protected class for special treatment. So, the example I have on the screen, in the context of people with disabilities, is if you had a zoning regulation that said group homes for people with mental disabilities shall not be located within 1,500 feet of a school zone. That calls out people with disabilities for very specific treatment that is different and, quite frankly, less advantageous than treatment for other groups. We also see disparate treatment come up when there is intentional discrimination that happens in the context of making a government decision. So, if there's discriminatory animus in passing a regulation or taking a specific action. The factors that courts use to look at whether there is discriminatory intent in a decision come from a Supreme Court case from a local government that's not too far from where you all are, the Village of Arlington Heights, Illinois. And what we look at are things like, does the decision have an actual discriminatory effect? What is the historical background of it? Did we depart from normal procedural sequences in disposing of the application? What's the legislative history? Did people say discriminatory things as part of a public hearing? Those are how we stuff out discriminatory treatment or disparate treatment as part of fair housing cases. So, some recent examples of disparate treatment. We had a case in Ohio, Stowe, Ohio, near Akron, where the local government's building code required special home safety modifications for housing for people with disabilities. It required things like larger doorways, ramps, things like that, which obviously are important for people who might be wheelchair-bound but don't really relate to mental or cognitive disabilities. That was found to be a form of discriminatory treatment. It was enacted, it imposed extra costs on housing for people with disabilities, and it didn't have a rational relationship to public safety as it related to a house for people with cognitive disabilities. Similarly, having a permitting process for non-conforming group homes and a city enforcement task force that was clearly aimed at reducing the number of group homes, that was found to have discriminatory intent. That was a case out of Newport Beach, California. It was decided by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in 2013. We have another recent case from Arizona, Yuma, Arizona. The city council denied a rezoning for a high-density housing development, and there, members of the public showed up to the hearing and made comments about the type of people who would live in that community or who they anticipated would live in that community, which sounded like discrimination, mainly against Latino families. That was found to be evidence of racially discriminatory intent just because the city council essentially agreed with a lot of the statements that were made by the public. Similarly, denying a rezoning for a project that contained affordable units that would have really changed the demographic profile of a community, that was found to have been done with discriminatory intent as well. That was the case out of Long Island, New York, in 2016. Turning to disparate impact, disparate impact is Turning to disparate impact, disparate impact is a different type of claim. That's where we have neutral laws, they're not passed for the purpose of discrimination, but they have a discriminatory effect on a particular protected group. So the way that courts analyze those, the plaintiff has to file a complaint that shows that there's a disparate impact, the court then analyzes what the government's interest was in making the decision or taking the action. And then the court weighs whether the government's being required to provide housing or just being restrained from discriminating and interfering with property owners' interests. We don't generally, in the United States, require our local governments to provide housing, we just require them to stay out of the business of discrimination in the housing market. The most recent case on that from the Supreme Court was a case out of Texas in 2015, which put some limitations on disparate impact, but still found that disparate impact claims could move forward as long as they were supported by statistical evidence of disparate impact. Finally, turning to reasonable accommodation. Courts look at three different pieces, or prongs, as it were, to look at whether there is a failure to reasonably accommodate by a local government. Reasonable accommodation claims are analyzed first as to whether they are reasonable. And the way that the courts think about what the reasonableness of an accommodation is, is first, they look at whether an accommodation would fundamentally alter a policy or regulation of the local government. So, for example, a case that found an unreasonable accommodation was where a provider of housing for, I think it was children with cognitive disabilities, wanted to use a hotel building to provide housing for them, and that was in a commercial zone that didn't allow residential uses. And there, the court found that that would have fundamentally altered the government's policy because it would have given the provider of those services the ability to house people in a commercial zone, which was not intended to have residential use. Also, in looking at reasonableness, courts look at whether an undue financial or administrative burden is imposed on the local government. So if it's going to cost local government excessive amounts of money, if it's going to cause local government administrative burden, that would be an unreasonable accommodation. If it's not going to do either of those things, then it's a reasonable accommodation. We also look at the necessity of the accommodation, and really, we look at two things in looking at whether an accommodation is necessary. The first is whether, from a clinical perspective, it's necessary to ameliorate the effects of the disability. So right now, the science, and it's been this way for the last probably 50 or 60 years, the science around a lot of disability is particularly mental or cognitive disability, including addiction. Is that small group home settings is the best way to ameliorate the effects of those disabilities? And so there's good case law and good science as well that supports that. Providing housing for people with disabilities in smaller group home settings is an appropriate way to ameliorate the disability and therefore is necessary. We also look at the financial effects of, or the financial needs of the provider. So, for example, if a provider wants to provide a group home setting for people recovering from addiction or seeking to treat a disability, we would look at whether it makes financial sense for the provider, or if they can make the project work with, say, only three people in the house, or four people versus a request for seven, or eight, or perhaps more. We also look at whether a request for reasonable accommodation will provide an equal opportunity for enjoyment of a dwelling unit by a disabled resident as compared with a non-disabled resident. So we're trying to make sure that people with disabilities have equal opportunity to reside in residential neighborhoods as compared with non-disabled people. The cases tell us that requests for accommodation can be required, the local governments are not required to guess as to whether they need to make a reasonable accommodation. They can require applicants to come forward and make a request for reasonable accommodation. There's also one exception to the requirement that reasonable accommodation requests be granted, which is that if it would cause a public safety problem. That is a very limited exception. There are, I think there, as of now, I have not seen any reported federal case that finds that there was a public safety problem that merited denying a reasonable accommodation. So it's very limited, and the courts have generally said that if there's going to be a public safety problem, the local government needs to have very strong documentation of what that public safety problem would be. So some examples of reasonable accommodation. We have a Supreme Court case from 1995 on the topic of family composition rules. So there, you had a local government that, I think, allowed up to three unrelated people to live together. So modifying those family composition rules to allow a group of unrelated people in recovery from addiction, that was found to be a reasonable accommodation. In that case, the City of Edmonds versus Oxford House, that was a case out of the State of Washington, and Oxford House is the provider of recovery residences. Similarly, requiring the city to allow a group living facility in a commercial zone district, again, that was not a reasonable accommodation. That was a case out of St. George, Utah. And then another case out of Connecticut, seven people could reside together and maintain a one-family home status under the FIRE Code. The FIRE Code puts special requirements on group homes, and it was determined that it was reasonable to allow that group of people not to make those modifications because their disabilities were sort of unrelated to sprinkling and fire access and things like So what happens when a local government gets sued under the FHA and the ADA? First of all, there are a number of different ways that damages can be awarded. So a prevailing party who sues a local government under FHA or ADA can get damages, actual or consequential, can get punitive damages. It also allows for awards of attorney's fees. I would also point out that that's a one-directional award, so the government can't get attorney's fees if it wins, it can't get damages if it wins, it would only be the parties, the plaintiffs, who can get those awards. Also importantly, individual decision-makers can be held liable under the Fair Housing Act. So we have cases under the Fair Housing Act where individual city council members, individual city officials are held liable for their decisions, and there's a whole background of case law on whether individuals can be held liable, but suffice it to say that it's possible under the Fair Housing Act. There are also a lot of opportunities for different parties to enforce Fair Housing Act and ADA violations. So the Department of Housing and Urban Development has some enforcement authorities, the Department of Justice can enforce particularly egregious violations of the Fair Housing Act and ADA, and then there's opportunity for private enforcement. So providers of recovery residences, of group homes and whatnot, have the ability to file individual lawsuits against local government. I'd also point out, I believe that Elmhurst is a community that receives CDBG and home funds, I might not be correct about that, but I think it's the case. So under your obligation to affirmatively further Fair Housing, HUD actually has the authority to withhold grant funding under those federal grant programs if you are, if they determine that actions that you take are not consistent with your Fair Housing Act obligations. So that's very important as well. So some common ways that we see local governments defend Fair Housing Act and ADA claims include just sort of standard defenses of standing rightness and mootness. One of the big things is that, you know, there's sometimes arguments about whether individuals who might reside in a particular group home, whether they're entitled to the protections of the Fair Housing Act and ADA, that frequently comes up. Sometimes we see defenses around what the injury is, if there's no harm to a protected class, that particularly comes up in disparate treatment and disparate impact claims. We see a lot of arguments that local government's decision-making is neutral, that it wasn't motivated by bias, it's a legitimate exercise of their state police power. Those can be successful defenses, but they also, in many cases, are not. Your obligation to reasonably accommodate, to proceed, for example, your obligation to be neutral in your decision-making, so even if you're neutral in your decision-making, you still have an obligation to make reasonable accommodations. And then we also see arguments kind of around those three prongs of the reasonable accommodation analysis as to whether the accommodation request was reasonable, or whether it would provide equal opportunity for a person with disabilities to use and enjoy a dwelling. So I'll turn for a minute and talk, just a few minutes, about sober living homes. Give me one second. So as I mentioned, people in recovery from drug and alcohol addiction are considered to be people with disabilities under both the Fair Housing Act and the ADA. Sober living homes are dwelling units that are subject to the protection of the Fair Housing Act. And so therefore, they require locality to grant reasonable accommodations when reasonable accommodation requests are made, and when they meet the three requirements of reasonable accommodation. And oftentimes, the question of whether a reasonable accommodation needs to be granted, it depends a lot on the individual circumstances of an application and of the neighborhood. So, for example, you know, granting a reasonable accommodation to allow a small sober living home in a single-family neighborhood makes a lot more sense than, say, a request for a 30-person addiction treatment facility in a single-family neighborhood. The former is probably a reasonable accommodation request, it probably should be granted. The latter is probably not a reasonable accommodation request. And I often say that, as a general principle, you have to treat people with disabilities under FHA and ADA on par with non-disabled people, and you really should be, your decision through the lens of, what is the land use impact of the request that's before you? So when we think about land use impact, we often think about questions of traffic, we think about questions of aesthetics, you know, how does a particular use look or function? We look at questions of whether particular uses will generate odors, or dust, or noise, things like that. So we need to be focusing our decision-making around sober living homes on those same things. For example, if the sober living home is going to introduce a lot of traffic into a community, if it's going to result in, for example, a significant aesthetic change to an existing dwelling that would place it out of character with surrounding dwellings, those might be more reasonable bases for denying a sober living home application than just saying that, oh, you know, these are people in recovery and they should not live in our neighborhood. That would obviously be a more discriminatory rationale for denying a sober living home. So I'll just walk through a few common things that I've heard in my practice, again, representing both providers and local governments, what I hear, and maybe some thoughts about how to respond to this. One of the first things I often hear is, a sober living home is in commercial use, so why should it be allowed in a residential neighborhood? The answer to that is fairly simple. The Fair Housing Act considers, if it's a housing unit, right, if it's a home, if it's an apartment, if it's a duplex, if it's a townhouse, it needs to be treated as a residential use under the Fair Housing Act. And I often hear concerns about, well, you know, people who are running sober living homes are generating a profit. Well, similarly, people who are renting homes out generate profit, too, but it's generally not the province of local government to regulate what a particular land use is earning in terms of a profit or, you know, grossing as part of its rental of property to people, whether they're disabled or not. I also hear about sober living homes are going to cause overcrowding. Generally speaking, sober living homes are subject to the exact same building code limitations on occupancy as any other use. So single-family homes, apartments, sober living homes, they're all subject to building code limitations on how many people or occupants you can have. And those limitations under the international codes are based on the size of bedrooms, they're based on the size of the entire dwelling unit. And local codes, local building codes can modify that as well. So if you have concerns about overcrowding, you can regulate those through a building code. Often hear concerns about maintenance, property maintenance of sober living homes. Local governments have a lot of schools to address property maintenance, so undoubtedly Elmhurst has nuisance ordinances that prohibit people from having, you know, overgrown front lawns, or poorly maintained structures, things like that. You can apply all of those same requirements to sober living homes. Also hear about additional traffic or parked cars. Again, local governments have the ability to enact zoning regulations or street regulations about parking on streets, you have the ability to enact regulations on parking on properties, private properties, so you have the ability to regulate those concerns. Often hear a lot of concerns about sober living homes attracting crime. This is one to be careful about, where stigma becomes part of decision-making or becomes part of community comment on applications that have a Fair Housing Act mention. Courts generally don't like that, that generally is evidence of disparate treatment. So you've got to be careful about, you know, listening to testimony about crime or talking about crime. Again, sober living homes subject to the same criminal code as other uses, just as, you know, somebody who commits a crime in a single-family home, who's a member of a family, is violating the law, the same is true of sober living homes. And again, we need to focus on land use impact rather than perceived characteristics about sober living home residents. Also hear concerns about state licensing. A lot of sober living homes operate under lower tiers of state licensing or certification than, say, medical providers. The law generally allows local governments to license businesses, and certainly, local governments can explore licensing sober living homes, but zoning shouldn't be confused for business licensing. So if you're going to buy a business licensing approach to regulate sober living homes or any other use, it needs to be based on protecting the people who reside in the home, and zoning instead deals with things like the land use impact that I spoke about earlier. So some common legal issues we see, we see concerns about familial status limitations. So, for example, where if you have a limit, and I know Elmhurst has a four unrelated party limit, courts have generally required that you grant reasonable accommodations to those limitations to allow smaller sober living homes to operate in single-family neighborhoods. Spacing and dispersal requirements, several local governments try to require spacing between group homes or sober living homes. There's been mixed success in some of those for both plaintiffs and local governments. Generally speaking, you're required to grant reasonable accommodations from those where they're merited. Special or conditional use permitting procedures, making sure that notice and hearing requirements are the same for people with disabilities as they are for non-disabled people. If you're using your procedures to routinely deny applications, courts will take notice of that. We see a lot of disparate treatment claims where members of the community are making statements in hearings that might be discriminatory in nature. And even if the city council members, you know, don't have a discriminatory bone in your body, if all of your public testimony is sort of discriminatory in nature and you deny an application, we've actually seen several successful claims that sort of go after the fact that all the public testimony is discriminatory in nature. And then around reasonable accommodation requests, again, the local government can require that request to be made, but denials of reasonable accommodation requests need to be based on that prevailing case law that I talked about in that three-part reasonable accommodation analysis. I'll just conclude, I understand that one of your neighboring jurisdictions has become the subject of a Department of Justice case on a matter that is fairly similar to the one that you're considering, at least involves a sober living home and a request for a reasonable accommodation. I've read that the order from the court which rejected the motion to dismiss that was filed by the village, so I have some baseline understanding of that case. There may be some factual distinctions between what the City of Elmhurst is facing compared to what the Village of Hinsdale is facing, although at their core, it's the same legal issue. It's about whether a small sober living home can locate in a residential area, and there was a request for reasonable accommodation before the village. There may have been some additional kind of bad behavior involved in that, and that the village filed suit against the operator of the sober living home before making a decision on the reasonable accommodation request, which seems like it had drawn the attention of the Department of Justice. But as I mentioned, there are other options for Fair Housing Act enforcement beyond just Department of Justice claims, and so it's important to keep those in mind as you proceed. So with that, I will stop talking, and I apologize, I ran a little longer than I anticipated, but hopefully this was good information, and I'm happy to open it up for questions and discussion, and I really appreciate your attention for the last 40 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. So I'm going to, I don't think you are able to see, but you'll be able to hear the questions. So let's let the alderman pose any questions they have. Alderman Palomski.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Connolly. That was very informative, and I appreciate you sharing your information and your expertise. My question, I've got a number of them, but I'll let, of course... My question, I've got a number of them, but I'll let, of course, let my colleagues ask. But my, I want to say, a first question that comes to mind revolves around your explanation that we should be looking to an accommodation if it is necessary to ameliorate the effects of a disability, where I'd always thought of, an accommodation is necessary if it provides equal access. And here's where I'm making that distinction. For example, like, if you're looking like at the ADA framework, a person who uses a guide dog, has that guide dog because that guide dog provides that person with equal access, where the protections that are afforded to a person using a guide dog are not the same that are afforded to somebody using a therapy animal. Because the therapy animal is more to provide, you know, will help ameliorate the effects of the disability, where a guide dog provides equal access to what the person needs. For example, along those same lines, let's say, like, in an elementary school setting, a student with physical and speech disabilities will have equal access, the one, not ADA, maybe under 504, to have note-taking, or, you know, access to positioning, or preferential seating. But it's the component that falls under IDEA that has the, those services that help ameliorate the effects of the disability. And those are separate, those are not covered under ADA. Those are more added services. So, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about the distinction, because when you talk about the definition of a dwelling, I'm wondering if looking at it as a person with or without a disability that is an addiction would have the same access to a dwelling as a person without that disability? Where what really seems to be the differentiating piece here is access to a therapy of sorts, or something that helps ameliorate the effects of that disability, which is the group setting and the supportive environment. So, I feel like there are enough examples to show that supportive environment is more of, isn't as protected as the equal access to the dwelling itself. Can you speak to that at all? The difference between the two, equal access versus access to the, you know, the therapy or the ameliorating contribution?
Yeah, and I think I understand the question. So, the, I'm happy to speak today. So, I'll first start with talking about sort of the necessity of the supportive environment. And again, I'm, you know, I'm not opining on the application that's in front of you. Just want to be clear about that. But what we see, oh, sorry, was there a question there?
No, you proceed.
Okay, okay. So, when we're talking about a group living arrangement for people who are in recovery from addiction, generally speaking, a sober living home, and I'm not a medical or psychiatric expert, so I'm speaking solely from kind of what I understand to be the prevailing medical and psychiatric science. Sober living homes are generally the last step in a person's recovery from addiction. And so, someone who's living in a sober living home has probably gone through some kind of medical detoxification, they may have gone through some kind of more intensive therapeutic environment, and now they are, you know, as part of what I'll call, and I don't even know if this is the right word, their re-entry into society, they're now in the last step of that. And so, the prevailing medical and psychiatric research tells us that having a supportive environment to overcome addiction is incredibly important. So, if you, if you take a person who has gone through detoxification, and you put them right back in the same place they were before, maybe it was a difficult family environment, maybe it was a difficult living situation, bad neighborhood, something like that, if you take them and put them back right in that situation, it's highly likely that they're going to relapse back into addiction. The prevailing science tells us that having that sort of supportive environment, so a family-type home where they're sharing household chores, they're going to work every day, probably, they are perhaps engaging in group meeting settings, all of that is sort of necessary for the amelioration of the disability, according to current, again, medical and psychiatric and sociological thinking. And so, that's what courts are looking at when they're evaluating whether an accommodation is necessary. Giving a person equal access or equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling, they're kind of interrelated in that it would determine that someone needs to be in a supportive environment of six, or eight, or 10 people to ameliorate the effects of the disability. If they then need to have an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling as anybody else, so the thinking goes, then you've got to provide a reasonable accommodation to allow them to reside in a single-family residential neighborhood. They need to have the ability to reside in a neighborhood just like anybody else. That's sort of the way that those cases are formulated and the information on which those decisions are based. I don't know if that answers the question, but hopefully, it goes a little ways toward it.
I think so, but are, so you're saying that there's no distinction between somebody having, or, it, the city is, has an obligation, and I would, you know, argue, it's just in the spirit of the law, the right thing to do, to allow for access to housing for somebody with a disability. I think that's a given. But you're saying it's not just access to the dwelling, it's access to, like, a therapeutic piece to it. So, we're not just saying somebody has access, equal access to housing, we're actually looking beyond housing and dwelling. So, we're not, you're not truly, you know, defining housing. This is actually access to an environment that goes beyond housing. Where housing could be defined as, you know, in a residential zone, I think it's easy to say, a place to sleep, a place to eat, access to utilities, temperature regulation, these kinds of things, that's housing. But we're really talking about more than housing here. So, it's really, it's kind of a, maybe where, though it's under housing and dwelling, it really speaks to more to that, more than that.
Sure. I understand what you're asking. So, the, I mean, as a city council, I guess, you know, you need to evaluate whether the application that's before you, you know, goes sufficiently beyond housing so as to make it, maybe, maybe it is more of like a commercial use, if there are services that are being provided there that couldn't be provided in a residential neighborhood. So, if there is medical treatment that is occurring as part of the facility, or facility's operation, then that seems less consistent with a single-family home being used where people who live there are going to work every day, they're coming home at night, maybe they're gathering with other members of the household in a group setting, just as a family would gather around a dinner table. Then that starts to look more like a residential use without kind of the added medical component. You know, just because, for example, if there's a, you know, a lot of sober living homes have, medication is kept in a central location. So, you know, just because medication's being kept in a central location, I mean, most of us, our medicine cabinets contain our, at least in my household, everybody's medicine, or the medicine cabinet contains everybody's medicine in the same place, that looks more like a residential use. But again, if a doctor is coming in and actually, you know, provide, you know, conducting procedures or things like that in the facility, then that starts to look less like a residential use. And it doesn't look like, it doesn't look like equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling.
Thanks.
Okay, Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I know there are a lot of sober homes out there, and some of them are very good, and some of them are not so good. Some of them might be so good that residents may choose to live next to them because they maintain the house so well, and the people that live there are contributors to the community, whereas there might be some on the other end of the scale that might not take care of their property, there may be, you know, some behavior issues with some of the people that stay there. What is the, the city's ability to judge and make decisions on reputation and performance of a sober home? We'd like to have a really good one in town. We don't want bad ones. What, what information are we afforded, and what decisions can we make in that area, generally?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And there ha, I mean, certainly, there have been well-publicized instances of sober living home operators not being good operators. I know here in Colorado, we've had some well-publicized examples of, you know, poor operators, so I understand the concern. Generally speaking, I mean, I, you know, to the extent that the city requires other applicants to establish or substantiate their reputation, if they're coming in and, you know, building an apartment building, or building a commercial retail strip mall, and, you know, to the extent you're evaluating the performance of those operators, certainly, you know, I think you have sort of full right to, you know, investigate and understand the background of the operator who is seeking to operate a sober living home in your community. I think, you know, the better approach, and what I've certainly told my municipal clients, is to make sure that you have, you know, a robust enforcement mechanism in place. So, you know, make sure that your, you know, you mentioned for property maintenance, make sure that your property maintenance code is up to snuff, and that it gives you the authority to go, you know, issue a cease and desist if there's, if there are violations of that. And like I said, as part of my presentation, some local governments have elected to create licensing programs for sober living homes. If you feel that, and I don't know the ins and outs of Illinois regulation of sober living homes, but if you feel that they are insufficiently regulated, and that, you know, you want to understand more about the operator, make sure the operator is a good operator, you have the ability to create a licensing scheme for addressing sober living homes. I would be very careful in doing that, because you can run afoul of Fair Housing Act issues in that realm as well. But, you know, particularly if the goal is to ensure that people who are residing in the sober living home are not being taken advantage of, and you're doing it for purposes of protecting them, you know, to the extent you want to have copies of the operators, you know, know where their other facilities are, if you want to, you know, have the ability to conduct inspections to ensure that the home is, you know, being well-maintained, you have the ability to do that. You can't be abusive with it, but you have the ability to do that.
Alderman Bastido.
I wanted to ask you to repeat something, or maybe clarify if you can. On the slide where you talked about reasonable accommodations, the second prong was the necessity of the accommodation. Did you say that there is case law supporting small group homes in this situation? For example, not the finances of the city, but the finances of the group home, if they live somewhere expensive, and this accommodation is necessary to make it affordable? Is that what you were talking about when you said the case law supports that accommodation?
Yeah, so, it's actually, it's interesting, it's the only place in land use law where we actually require local governments to consider the financial situation of a provider, or of a, you know, developer or landowner. In the case of fair housing and reasonable accommodations, providers of group homes and group living arrangements have succeeded in convincing courts that where a local government, say, has a limitation on unrelated people, maybe it's four unrelated people, the provider might be able to convince the court that we can't operate our facility because having four people makes it, you know, economically infeasible to operate the use. And so, a local government, to the extent that a local government is being presented with evidence as part of an application that, you know, a low number of unrelated people in a home and not granting the reasonable accommodation would make it economically infeasible to operate the sober living home, then in that case, you know, you need to consider that information, and that would be part of your evaluation of whether it's necessary to ameliorate the disability.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback on that last question, so you gave an example of four versus 30, you know, as potentially being unreasonable. What I just heard was, you know, how do you draw the line, you know, between four versus five versus eight? It sounds like municipalities would need to consider and flex a bit with respect to financial hardship in running the operation. Could be one, one variable that could help you, you know, sort of get to a reasonable, you know, number, whether it's four, or eight, or six, or seven. What other variables might come into play as you're trying to figure out what's reasonable between four and 30?
Yeah, so, again, I think actually the main factor, and what I like to think of as a decision-making framework, which this may be helpful to you all, or it may not be, is thinking about it in terms of land use impact. So, if you have a neighborhood of homes that are all, you know, quite small, maybe they're 1,000 or 1,000 or 1,500 square foot homes, and someone's coming along and asking, you know, well, can I operate a, you know, a 10-bed sober living home in one of those? I think most of us, you know, would look at that and say, well, geez, these are small houses, and it doesn't really make a lot of sense to allow 10 people to live in a home here, or, you know, a 30-bed one, if someone's, that looks more like a multifamily home in a residential neighborhood. You know, where you have a neighborhood with larger homes, or, you know, maybe you have, you know, in a single-family neighborhood, you can have, I think under your code, you can have an unlimited number of people living in a home, at least up to what the building code allows. So, you have to look at it to the standpoint of, you know, if a, if a 10-member family, or if, you know, mom and dad and a few kids and grandparents, or maybe some extended family members, if they can live in a home together and have 10 people in a home, then you probably need to be looking pretty seriously at a request for a 7, 8, or 9-bed sober living home to kind of have that parity. And I think the other factor to be looking at, again, is what is the impact? So, if you have a 10-member family, that family might have more of a traffic impact on the neighborhood, or more of a parking impact on the neighborhood than a six or seven-bed sober living home. Similarly, we all know, I mean, I certainly, I've known those property owners who don't have unrelated people living in the house, they're just bad at property maintenance. They've got weeds in the front yard, they've got, you know, tingles falling off the roof and, and duders falling off the couch. You know, it, that, that family might be having more of an impact on the community than a sober living home that has, you know, again, five, six, seven beds. So, I think looking at it in sort of lens of, you know, what are the surrounding land uses? You know, in the application before you, you're being asked to allow seven people to live in a home. I mean, if seven people can live in other homes in the neighborhood, that starts to look like... look more reasonable than, you know, if, again, the application were for 15 people in a single-family home where you're sort of bunking up multiple people to a bedroom or things like that.
Thank you.
Alderman Palomski.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad you brought up the family example. And I'm wondering if you would recommend approaching this differently? And I understand that our case examples suggest that if a process is in place, that we should proceed using that to, you know, achieve an accommodation. However, for one reason, and I think this kind of speaks to the example that you gave with the city council, or, you know, somebody being personally liable if they, you know, hear a public comment and start to parrot that and then act on that, would it make more sense to say, you know, instead of addressing this as even a housing issue at all, should this be something addressed at a staff level where somebody would say, "All right, there's an applicant, and that applicant is seeking," you know, in this case, a sober home, but the way it's regarded is, they are seeking, and the applicant doesn't necessarily know how to ask for a specific accommodation, but staff could work with them to say, "We're really looking for an accommodation to the policy and practice in how we regard or how we define a family." And if that is the case, there really would not be even a need for a zoning, you know, to grant any sort of allowance in any way, or a conditional use. This is more at the administrative level, and especially when, you know, if somebody could provide, you know, that record of their, you know, disability. Okay, so somebody, this is, you know, maybe this is where the licensing piece comes in. You know, somebody is a certified, you know, addiction specialist, and the people there are indeed, you know, have, you know, completed a recovery program, and, you know, they have a record of that, and then the members of the council don't even need to be involved in the, any more specific details, and then it could just be handled that way, and it's not even a zoning issue. Is that something you have seen? Would you consider that as a recommendation?
Yeah. It is something I've seen, and it's something I've seen a lot, and it's something I definitely recommend. I think that, as a general matter, you know, my advice to decision-makers, you know, city councils, town councils, whatever, is always that if you can avoid having hearings where you might put yourself in a position to hear discriminatory testimony, you should do everything possible to not have that hearing. And so, there are several governments around the country I'd be happy to share code examples with your legal counsel. There are several examples, jurisdictions, that have adopted administrative procedures for granting reasonable accommodations, and I think they work quite well. It puts your staff in a position of having to make that decision, but it avoids the possibility where you really can have discriminatory testimony, and not saying that your residents are discriminatory, but, you know, I think what comes across in a hearing transcript in a federal court case, it can often look different than how it might sound even in a city council chamber.
Thank you.
Alderman Hill.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I've been looking a little bit to see if there is any empirical evidence about maybe best practices or optimal number of occupants in a sober living home, and what literature was out there, and I found very little other than some examples of, say, what other organizations, such as Oxford House, had set their criteria at a minimum of six members to form a chapter. And I just want to hear a little bit, in your experience, have you heard or seen in the literature anywhere, or in cases, a best practices number for sober living homes, or an optimal number in terms of a treatment setting?
I, there's a lot of case law there about the optimal number, and so, I'll go off of that. I mean, you know, the Oxford House model tends, I think it tends to be eight people, or historically been eight people, who are in recovery. And sometimes, depending on the nature of the services being provided, sometimes you have an onsite house manager or something like that. So, it can change based on whether you've got the manager or not. Generally speaking, the, you know, in terms of just the cases and, you know, expert testimony you hear in cases, you know, anywhere between 14 is generally what is sort of regarded as the optimal number. And the way that that changes goes up and down, you know, is based on factors such as, you know, what is being, what types of services are being provided by the house. So, for example, if the house is providing meals, if the house has an onsite manager, that they're paying, if there's, you know, actual programming that's going on, that might merit a higher number. If none of that is occurring, that might merit a lower number. It also matters, you know, Chicago metro area is just like Denver metro area, is the, you know, increasingly expensive place to purchase housing or lease housing, and so, certainly, as I mentioned, the, you know, the financial feasibility of providing treatment or providing housing is part of the analysis. And so, where you have more expensive real estate, it might merit larger numbers; where you have less expensive real estate, it might merit lower numbers in the house. You can, but generally speaking, you can find support for a group living arrangement between six and 14 people that can lead to a successful recovery outcome.
Thank you, Alderman Doiter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was, I think I was thinking something similar to the question that was just asked. And that was, you know, similarly, I looked through a few different documents that didn't provide that number of people. It was the, something that was put out by SAMSA, the Recovery Housing Best Practices and Suggested Guidelines, two documents from the National Association of Recovery Residences, one that was 46 pages and talks, you know, to the primer on recovery residences, and another is same organization, the Code Principles and Standards. And in those three documents, I didn't see any reference to the number of people. And I've been thinking about this issue all along, as that that access to housing issue really is the opportunity to be successful in the setting. I don't see it in the best practices. I hear what you're saying about the six to 14 that's been documented in case law. But I think the more interesting piece that you've talked about tonight is that the feasibility, the financial feasibility. And does that become the primary guidance in the criteria to be considered? And if so, is that attached to any particular house? You know, is it, do you have to look at the specific application that comes in, or do you think about access to housing in the neighborhood, right? Maybe a smaller house is going to be less expensive than a larger house? So, you know, if someone would choose as the more expensive house, do we have to say yes, even if a smaller house might be more affordable?
That's a great question. There's not great law on that particular point. I mean, generally speaking, you know, my understanding of the cases that have looked at that issue is, you know, you have an application that's coming before you, you know, somebody wants to operate a sober living home in a particular dwelling unit, and you're sort of analyzing this question of necessity and financial feasibility against that particular dwelling unit. Just because there are other, you know, smaller houses available, you know, that generally is not a factor, at least not that I've seen in the judicial decisions that have looked at this issue. I mean, certainly, you know, I mean, I suspect that the real estate market in Elmhurst right now is like it is everywhere else, and that there's not a lot of, there aren't a lot of options on the market right now. I mean, you know, if there were for-sale signs down a particular street, and a provider did have an option to go find another home, would that factor into a court thinking about whether an accommodation was necessary? Perhaps. I just, I've never seen a case that's really dealt with that.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Tulluto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two-part question. It's clear to me that, based on your explanation, that the American Disabilities Act protects folks who are in recovery, as you described. You also shared that that protection does not extend to people who are currently using an illegal drug or alcohol in the sober living facility. So, my question, my first part of the question is, if a municipality or local government has a sober home in their community and becomes aware of a person in that home who is not protected per the prior definition, does that ADA protection become lost for the entire home, or only that person? And then, the second follow-on to that is, you know, are there examples of legal ways that local governments can enforce and/or monitor that in and out of that protected status within a sober home?
Yeah. So, to answer the first question, if, it's sort of a balancing act, right? If the local government becomes aware that, you know, one person in a 10-bedroom sober home, or 10-bed sober home, has been using illegal drugs, and again, local government becomes aware doesn't mean, just like a neighbor says, that they're using illegal drugs. I mean, I think, you know, there'd be some investigation that would be probably warranted in that situation, slightly involving your police department. If the local government becomes aware of that, does that result in a loss of protection for the entire use? Probably not. If it turns out that, you know, drug use is widespread because the operator is not, you know, adhering to its own, you know, its requirements under the law, then that, it might lose its protection under the FHA and HSA. So, that is certainly something that, you know, has happened in other places. I don't hear it happening very often, but if, again, if, you know, a significant number of people are found to be involved in drugs, certainly it would lose its protection, and the reasonable accommodation would not be warranted. To your question about, and I think your question was about, you know, what can the local government do to enforce that provision? You know, again, if you had a licensing scheme that allowed for maybe a once-a-year inspection, that might be one way to look at it. Ultimately, just as the local government doesn't have great ways of identifying when there is illegal drug use going on in a single-family home, you know, there aren't a lot of great ways for a local government to, you know, really sort of dig in and know whether illegal drugs are being used. Even if there's a once-a-year inspection, you know, my guess is that that inspection doesn't allow you, at least now without a search warrant, is not going to allow you to go search people's, you know, bureaus and file drawers and things like that to see if there are illicit drugs in the house. So, it probably is more of a complaint-based system to determine whether there are illegal drugs being used.
All right. I guess I'll ask a question. I'll make it a two-part one, so I can be like Alderman Tulluto. I want to clarify one thing that you said, Mr. Connolly. When you said in one of your slides that you talked about overcrowding, and you said that sober homes would be subject to the same building code limitations on occupancy as any other structure, I assume that you're talking about the physical, as opposed to reasonable accommodation, about how many people can live? You know, if you have an ordinance that says four unrelated people, that that statement about the same building codes is talking about space per square foot and the size of the building, not the number of, the relationship of the residents? Is that correct?
That is correct. And in fact, that's exactly what the City of Edmonds versus Oxford House Supreme Court decision in 1995, that's exactly what that was about. So, the City of Edmonds was using a family, you know, familial restriction to keep Oxford House from operating in the community, and the Fair Housing Act very expressly allows the application of neutral restrictions on occupancy. And so, Edmonds went and told the Supreme Court, "Well, you know, this is a neutral restriction on occupancy because it's just based on familial status." And the Supreme Court said, "No, that's not, you need to grant a reasonable accommodation from your familial status restrictions or limitations, because that is not what the Fair Housing Act is talking about." What the Fair Housing Act is talking about are what you said, Mayor, which is the, you know, the building code limitations that are based purely on the area of the structure and the type of construction of the structure, which then inform the number of people who can occupy it.
All right. Thank you. My second question is, you talked about how we would look at other codes and other, well, let me ask the question this way. We have in Elmhurst a group home ordinance that allows eight members of a group home to live together, and the only distinction I see is that the definition in our ordinance of group home talks about having a staff member present, which may or may not be the case in a sober home. Is it appropriate, or is it required, to look at another ordinance that has such a similar purpose, or such a similar regulatory framework?
Yeah, I think it is. If you're being asked to make a reasonable accommodation to allow, you know, six, seven, eight people in a sober living home that doesn't have an onsite manager, and your code already allows eight people to live together in a group home with a site manager, again, you know, going through the reasonable accommodation analysis, looking at whether you're fundamentally upsetting the zoning and regulatory scheme, looking at financial administrative burdens, things like that, I mean, you could very easily come out to the conclusion that, you know, allowing a similarly sized group living arrangement without the onsite manager looks very reasonable in light of the fact that you already allow those groups with an onsite manager.
All right. Thank you. We've gone substantially over our time, but if anyone has another question that they'd like to pose before we conclude with this part of our meeting? All right, then. Brian Connolly, thank you very much for taking a little extra time with us, for sharing your unique expertise, and I look forward to talking to you in the future.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. Really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks. Good night. I think what I'm going to do at this point is, because we took things a little bit out of order, I wanted to make sure that we were able to accommodate Mr. Connolly's time. So, I put public comment after the portion of the program for Mr. Connolly. And as I mentioned to some of the members of the public, there will be an additional opportunity for those who want to do public comment when we take this up, again, before the full council. But is there anyone, Clerk Cameron, who signed up for public comment?
No, Mayor, no one signed up.
And is there anyone in the audience that wants to make public comment this evening who did not have an opportunity to sign up? All right. Then I'll turn it back to the council. I don't know if people want to, oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone on the telephone line who wants to participate in the public comment, make public comment at this time? Right there or none? All right. Are there, do the members of the council want to take up any discussion tonight, or to defer it to when we come back before the full council? All right. Mr. Mayor.
Can we have a discussion if it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, as long as you don't take action, take any action, I don't think.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions from the council members outside of the presentation? All right.
Mayor.
Alderman Park. Alderman Park.
Thank you. Thank you. Do, could we get some information regarding... Could we get some information regarding how the size of the house, the 348-inch, compares to the neighborhood, as Mr. Connolly was saying, with the land use impact?
I'm sure we could do that. And I don't, did the council receive copies of the presentation that was made tonight? Did anyone receive that? Would you like to have that sent around so we'll also send you the presentation?
We'll post it on Board Docs.
Post it on Board Docs, even better. All right, Alderman.
And I gotta have a two-parter.
All right.
How the heck do you spell ameliorate?
A and.
Oh, you want to have a spelling bee?
Yes, I do. I gotta look that one up.
All right. Anything else for this evening? And then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan, seconded by Alderman Deuter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We do? Oh, that's right, we have Mr. Jensen. Clerk Tamer? Thank you, Alderman Mulliner.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Breymus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toluuto?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist absent, Bostido?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one absent. We're adjourned. Thank you all for your time.